I hereby call to order this meeting, the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Thursday, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, and the time is ten oh three A.M. Would those commissioners that are in attendance please identify themselves and state as to whether they are here in person or via Google meets?
This is Joe Pennington. I'm participating via Google meets.
Commissioner Feinstein, we don't have any sound from you. No sound. Still no sound. It shows your mic is off, but there is no sound coming through. And now he's gone from my screen. There he goes. There he is.
We got him?
I see him. I just don't hear him.
Yeah, I can see him. See his lips moving. Show he's taking his mic on and off, but no, it shows mics off, but I'm sorry, your unmute's off, but I still can't hear you. Can you try the Commissioner Feinstein, can you try the phone line, leave this on for your camera? Maybe just mute it and then try calling it on the phone line? Should be in the the notice that was sent to you. If we can just wait one second.
Francisco, I have the number. I've got the number in front of me if you want me to read it off.
Uh, not not over the the call.
Yeah, okay.
Hold on one second. Let me um. Carlo, do you have it ready available? Can you text it to Commissioner Feinstein?
Yes.
First meeting of the year using Google meets. So uh, I think that's. We we switched from Zoom. Zoom was was great for us last year. We switched over to this. So now we gotta work out the kinks.
Uh, we'll get there. You know what? I hope one day we all sit in the same room together. Imagine that.
Not nearly as frustrating as when your third grade son's Zoom meeting crashes over and over and over and over.
We can hear you now.
Okay, I I am here by Google meets.
Got him.
Great. And uh, and this is Scott Fletcher. I too. I'm here via Google meets. Uh, welcome all. Happy New Year. Uh, we're headed in the right direction, I think. Uh, let's press into our business. Um, item B is our new business. B one is pursuant to ARS section five dash two-two-seven, two-two-eight A, B, and E, and two-two-nine, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Joel Lopez of Rough Nation LLC, doing business as Rough Nation MMA, formerly known as Ringside Promotions. This is for a two thousand twenty-one promoter's license. Mr. Meneses, will you speak to Mr. Lopez's application, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lopez, are you on the call? Someone from.
Yes, this is Joe Lopez.
All right, Joel. All right. So Mr. Lopez is on the call. Um, as you see, uh, Mr. Lopez has changed the name of Ringside Promotions to uh, Rough Nation LLC. They're gonna be doing business as Rough Nation MMA. Um, they submitted the required paperwork. Um, and as you can see from the background report that I sent over this morning, um, all of the business requirements filed with the Corporation Commission appear to be in order for the name change as well. Um, there were no derogatory remarks listed, um, and it was recommended that Mr. Lopez is suitable. I do have one question. Um, looking over the finances, um, in the past, Mr. Lopez has publicly stated, um, last year that there was a loss of approximately five hundred thousand. I don't see anywhere in the finances where it shows there was a revenue stream around that. So I'm just not sure if that was not in this P and L or is this in the prior years uh, P and L or finance report if Mr. Lopez could speak to that?
Yeah, this year was was dismal. Uh, we didn't create enough sales this year, of course, because of COVID. So our uh, financial situation um, definitely had an impact uh, was impacted by COVID. Uh, we only had one event in two thousand and twenty, so it was not for uh, twenty. Um, I believe it was accumulation of uh, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen where uh, we brought in sales over two hundred and fifty thousand per year. So I think that was alluding to that more. But twenty twenty, yeah, but twenty twenty, uh, we didn't even come close to that.
Yeah, it was a projection based off the first show in February. That was the projection for the rest of the year. So that's what that was.
Yeah, uh, yeah, and and I I totally forgot about that as well. So in twenty twenty fifteen fights lined up uh, with casinos, new casinos uh, from not only in Arizona, but at also a couple of casinos already um, in line because we had submitted our paperwork for their licensure. So we were working and um, we were already getting contracted and then COVID hit. And so all those contracts uh, had been delayed or postponed. So based on the contracts that that I had in place, that's where that number, what what uh, we came up with that number because that was what we were projecting.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't have any other questions. After looking through the packet, it appears everything was submitted um, in order. So I would recommend to the commission to approve Mr. Lopez for a twenty twenty-one promoter license um, for Rough Nation LLC doing business as Rough Nation MMA.
Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Uh, commissioners, any thoughts, questions for Mr. Lopez?
Mr. Chairman, on the uh, letter that we received regarding uh, the financial uh, situation uh, and recommendation that we could approve, there was also a statement in there that uh, asked that we uh, require the promoter to use certified funds uh, for his events this year. And I'd just like to know if Mr. Lopez would have a problem with that.
Uh, Mr. Pennington, if I could speak to that real quick before Mr. Lopez, um, that is because I believe his his um, performance bond does expire um, this year, but it's not due to expire until the summer of this year. So that was just the um, financial investigators recommendation. If there's not gonna be a bond on file, is my understanding, that they would recommend that certified funds. Um, we've never had a problem with uh, Mr. Lopez paying his uh, fees in the past. Um, and Mr. Lopez um, will renew his performance bond when it is set to expire at the end of July. Um, so I would disagree with requiring him to have certified funds. The way he's done it in the past has worked, um, and there's nothing to deviate from that.
Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Uh, Mr. Lopez, you do not need to worry about answering the question.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, any other thoughts or questions for Mr. Lopez? Okay, there being none, the chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Dr. Feinstein, you wanna make the motion?
Sure, I move to approve. Yeah, I moved. I moved. I moved to approve Mr. Lopez.
I second the motion.
We have a motion.
Five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, A, B, E, and five dash two-two-nine. I second Dr. Feinstein's motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, three, two, zero. Congratulations, Mr. Lopez. But sit tight. Let's talk about your next piece of the puzzle, an event request from Rough Nation for approval of the following MMA event to be held at Rough Headquarters in Tempe, Arizona, live streamed, no audience, on Saturday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Meneses, will you speak to this event request, please?
Yes, sir. So Mr. Lopez has been eagerly awaiting to uh, do another event. Um, obviously, under COVID, it's kind of delayed things. Um, and so he has went ahead and started to plan um, for an event in the future, which I think is a is a great idea to give some more time for the COVID data to hopefully um, begin to level or reduce. Um, the event request he did submit right now is for February the thirteenth. He is uh, anticipating approximately twelve bouts. There will be no crowd in attendance, only required staff of the commission and required staff of the promoter, um, and required staff of the um, the company that will be doing the live streaming. Um, this would be done at um, Mr. Lopez's headquarters in Tempe. I have toured the venue um, in the past, especially for the grand opening and have seen it. It does have enough space. We would still have to do some logistical things to kind of stagger that many that many bouts and that many people coming into that room, just because I don't think there's enough staging rooms. Um, but Mr. Lopez would be open to that. Uh, we're still working through his COVID protocols. Um, and we're gonna get to the COVID data here shortly down the agenda. So I would recommend to the commission um, a conditional approval at this time. Uh, the conditional approval being uh, contingent upon two things. One, Mr. Lopez submitting a approved um, uh, COVID protocol that is reviewed and approved by myself. And two, that the COVID data shows that we are at a uh, unacceptable or safe uh, range to to resume uh, sporting events. So I would recommend that the commission review this at the next commission meeting, which would be uh, February tenth. That doesn't give Mr. Lopez a whole lot of time if the event needs to be canceled. But Mr. Lopez is aware that um, of the website that we are using with AZDHS to track the data so he can watch it himself. He knows the 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 magic threshold number that that the commission is eyeing, so he can also keep a track track of that for himself. Um, and in the week of the commission meeting, the week of his event, um, him and I will have a status update and and make a determination of how the data is looking and whether or not we are going to plan to proceed um, with a request to the commission at that meeting. So um, with that, I would recommend, like I said, a conditional approval contingent upon the two things. One, the COVID protocols, and two, the COVID data.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Um, Mr. Lopez, I admire your moxie to try and get back in the ring, so to speak, and get after it early. Um, obviously, are dicey times. Um, I hope you're able to get this pulled off. Um, but again, I I appreciate you getting back after it, and we'd love to do some events with you this year. We're looking forward to get back out there ourselves.
May I jump in here?
Commissioners, yeah.
So this is Jason Martinez, matchmaker for Rough. Um, with regard to uh, Francisco's statements just now, I would recommend that the um, that the status check be done on Friday, the fifth, or Monday, the eighth, at the latest, because there are several um, fighters coming from Las Vegas. And that would put in the tenth is a little too long to put them, because they'll be getting COVID tested before they leave their state, et cetera, et cetera. So I recommend that that the status check be Friday, the fifth, or Monday, the eighth, so that we can communicate appropriately to the athletes, so that they're not hung up halfway here when they get the news.
That's a valid concern. Mr. Meneses, you're you're intending to speak to Mr. Lopez and his people on a daily basis as we crawl closer to it, correct?
Yeah, we'll we'll start speaking a lot more frequently as we get closer to this event. Um, that is definitely the plan. Um, and the plan would be um, to definitely have a status conference the Monday prior to the commission meeting, um, which would be the Monday prior to his events. Looking at the calendar, that would be Monday, the eighth. So that would give him um, approximately five and a half days' notice. Um, but like I said, Mr. Lopez and his team also has the have the website, so they are seeing the same thing that I'm looking at. They can infer the same the same um, response that we're gonna have based on that data. Um, so there shouldn't be no surprises, but we will definitely have a status update of what my proposed recommendation to the commission will be. We'll do that on that Monday, the eighth, and then I'll make that formal recommendation to the commission on the tenth.
I have been monitoring that data daily as well, Francisco, and communicating with coaches and athletes as the status changes day to day. So that that communication line has been clear. So thank you.
Uh, Mr. Meneses, if that event was three days from now, I assume we would not be moving forward with the current numbers. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. So um, we're gonna get to the COVID data um, uh, down the the agenda, but what we, as you remember, the commission had determined that we want to see the numbers um, at or above ten percent for at least two consecutive weeks. Right now, we're, I think, two days consecutive, about eight percent. So we'll get to that in a few minutes, but um, we're we're not really, we're kind of holding where we're at, but we're not much uh, improving in a in a good sense so far.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Commissioners, thoughts, questions about this event and this situation?
Mr. Chairman, it's just a difficult time for everyone, and I uh, know that Mr. Lopez and his team are looking very closely at the hospital data as long as well as Mr. Meneses. So as we can proceed with this, we will do it with caution and safety in mind.
Agreed. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Feinstein, questions, thoughts?
No, I would just echo that. Um, if we can uh, based on hospital data, put the event on um, safely, then I'm also supportive.
I guess we're all in agreement in that regard. Um, we're gonna get to two weeks of ten percent and better, but I just don't know if we're gonna get to it in the next two weeks, if you will. Um, uh, I guess we've uh, we've spoken about this at length. Um, the the chair would be open to a conditional attempt, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant uh, Rough Nation uh, approval for an event on February the thirteenth uh, with no audience. And it's contingent upon uh, the COVID uh, Rough Nation's COVID protocol being approved as well as the hospitalization data being above uh, available beds above ten percent for at least two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did we get you? Did we, uh, Mr. Feinstein, did we get you? Do we simultaneously say aye?
I will. I will say it again. Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the motion carries unanimously. Uh, I hope we can get this done, Mr. Lopez. Stay tuned, and we'll stay in touch as best we can. So uh, so you know where things are headed to. But uh, I I can't wait to start doing events with you, and I hope February thirteenth, the first of them. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Executive Director. Thank you, Chairman, for all your support. Uh, we're definitely gonna do our best. We've been working uh, nonstop since last year for this opportunity. Uh, we feel that it's 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 time for us to uh, uh, at least make the attempt and and see where this goes because uh, we uh, we love this sport and uh, not gonna give up on it. And we have a fantastic team. Honestly, we do that they're they they've stuck around. So that that should tell you, you know, the uh, the commitment level from our staff that we haven't lost a person yet. So uh, even through the amiss of uh, of COVID. So we're very, very fortunate for that. And thank you for uh, for for rules and uh, and we'll we'll adjust our sails as we go. And uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Meneses for for your support as well.
Thanks, Joel. Take care now.
Thank you.
Um, let's press on. B two is the commissioner, much-needed commissioner, legal training with Assistant Attorney General, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Meneses, we speak to this, please.
Yes, sir. So as you remember, we had talked about um, not only with having a a new commissioner appointed, but also as a refresher, um, our Assistant Attorney General, Ms. Kelly Wagner, um, has offered to put on sort of a legal training for uh, commissioners, both for the new commissioners and for as a refresher. She has already done so and offered so with the Racing Commission, and now she wants to move um, to do so with our commission as well. The date that looks like we were able to arrange with everyone's schedule, and I just want to go ahead and make sure that we're we're good to finalize that, um, would be February fifth. That's a Friday at ten A.M. And if everyone is still good with that, I would recommend the commission to do a motion to adopt that meeting date or approve that meeting date um, for a commissioner legal training with the Assistant Attorney General, Ms. Kelly Wagner, on Friday, February fifth at ten A.M.
Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Where is that to take place? Have we sorted that out?
We'll do it online like this. It'll be on uh, a Google meets. Um, and it'll all be a video. Ms. Wagner says she anticipates about an hour. Um, it may go longer if there is additional questions or so. So I would plan for about an hour and a half to be safe. Um, but uh, knowing that uh, it should be right around an hour, I think.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you. Um, uh, gentlemen, questions, thoughts, or a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the uh, commissioner legal training for uh, Friday, February fifth at ten A.M.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We will uh, be going to class on February fifth. I'm looking forward to it. Um, B three is our response to Ms. Brandy Pierce regarding licensing fees. This is dating back to the November twenty twenty regular meeting. Mr. Meneses?
Uh, yes, sir. As you remember, uh, Ms. Pierce had submitted a question before the commission and the um, uh, we were instructed to add this to the to follow up and add this to the agenda. So we are following up now. Um, we have spoken with the agency CFO, uh, due to the current financial situation of the commission due to a lack of events. Um, the CFO would not recommend waiving any fees at this time. I've also followed up with um, our Assistant Attorney General um, to review some of our 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 legal um, uh, options, if we're even allowed to. And it doesn't appear that we would also have the authority to to waive fees um, under our current rules. So um, the response to Ms. Pierce, and I know that uh, Mr. Jason Martinez had also asked the same question, um, and several of our officials had asked the same question. Um, but the response is going to be that no, we are unable to um, grant uh, licenses into twenty twenty-one or waive fees. So all fees will be due for licenses for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meneses. I appreciate you pursuing that. Uh, commissioners, thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions or thoughts about it.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner, I have no no questions there.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Um, let's continue down the path. B four is the response to Mr. Jason Martinez regarding athlete physicals. This stemming from our December twenty twenty regular meeting. Mr. Meneses?
Yes, sir. As uh, as you remember, Mr. Martinez um, stated that he he was a logical person, and he he felt that he knew the answer to this question. Um, and uh, I'm here to share that Mr. Martinez was correct in reviewing whether or not the commission can um, grandfather or accept physicals from the prior year. According to statute, um, it looks like the commission is uh, required to and uh, receive new physicals every year. That is a health and safety consideration or standard to make sure. Um, there are limited circumstances where we have waived um, um, physicals up to ninety days um, from the required um, timeline to submit them. But those are on a case-by-case basis. Um, and the promoters are um, aware of the standard in which I apply to grant those. Um, but it's usually no more than ninety days. We definitely do not have the authority to to accept it for the entire year.
Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Yeah, we are. We are bound by statute, and in the interest of fighter safety, we have to have timely physicals. It's just uh, the core of what we do. Uh, commissioners, thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with your comments.
Thank you. Uh, okay, there being, yes.
I was also in agreement. Sorry.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, all right, let's move into C, our old business. C one is our COVID nineteen updates. Mr. Meneses?
Yes, sir. So looking at the COVID data, and I'm just gonna pull it up, so I'm looking at it real time as I'm talking to you. Um, so it looks like the ICU bed usage and availability remains at eight percent available. Um, it's been eight percent for uh, last three days or so. It was down into the seven percents um, for a few days. Um, so about three or four days ago, uh, we were down a little lower. We have come up one percent and uh, up to the eight percent. We are holding steady there for now. Um, when it comes to uh, inpatient inpatient bed usage, uh, we're right around the same. It's eight percent. It's been eight percent uh, looking back for um, almost two weeks. It's maintained eight percent. We haven't really improved at all. Um, and then the emergency room bed usage has hovered around the high uh, forties to the low fifty percent availability. So with all that, um, as you remember, we had spoken with our chief ringside physician, Dr. Ken Oda, who is on the call today. Um, and we had also spoken with members of AZDHS, um, as the commission had previously decided that we would suspend events if we are below ten percent, and if we remain um, below for for two weeks or so till we come back up. So um, I invited Dr. Oda. If we have any, if the commission has any questions they would like to to ask uh, Dr. Oda regarding, you know, COVID and the COVID data, um, please uh, do so. Otherwise, my my recommendation maintains that we we continue to monitor this data, and we continue with the with the requirements that we have put into place at this time.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, questions regarding this?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I I have no questions, and I would just add that uh, you know, my day job is taking care of those patients in the ICU, and it's a pretty dire circumstances right now. And um, it doesn't feel like on the inside we're really on on the tail end of it yet. So um, I I appreciate the attention of the commission to these numbers and um, how responsible um, this commission has been uh, towards postponing these events.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The only thing that, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Here. Um, I guess uh, just to add to that, um, Dr. Feinstein uh, unfortunately has to see the consequences of COVID uh, in the intensive care unit. Um, from my perspective, I'm seeing these patients where, when they're when they're reaching that inflection point to where it the disease goes from kind of like mild cold-like symptoms, maybe a little bit of flu-like symptoms uh, to that transition where they actually start going downhill very quickly. And of course, my position is to ensure that I triage them accurately, uh, to send the ones that really need to go to the hospital, to the hospital, and just maintain uh, uh, surveillance of those that are staying at home. And I would say right now, we're still um, it's scary. Uh, I get calls daily from nurses that are out in the field uh, seeing patients that are calling in for IV hydration, and a lot of these folks, they're they're presenting hypoxic, which means that their their oxygen saturation is well below normal. So it's this gray area of just what what do we do with these folks? And um, it's usually around day seven. Uh, the data suggests between day seven, day nine is that transition point where um, you really got to watch them carefully, because that's when they can go into uh, what's called severe COVID, where they might actually require um, mechanical ventilation. So yeah, I think we we obviously need to be watching this very carefully. Um, it is the way it is right now, because we still don't have vaccines uh, available for the entire uh, public at large. So um, yeah, we'll be watching very closely, and I think we just need to, for any event that we do have going forward, uh, we just have to um, exercise uh, very close caution.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you both, doctors, for your efforts. Uh, uh, interesting times, no doubt, and we are not out of the woods, it looks like. Uh, we're right in the middle of them. But uh, if we all stay safe and do the right things, we hopefully will get to a place where we can put on events again and feel comfortable with things again. But we're not there yet. I I thank you both for all your efforts and trying to keep us moving in the right direction. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Meneses, for your update. Let's jump into information reports. Let's talk about the twenty twenty-one commission meeting schedule. Mr. Meneses?
All right. If you, gentlemen, look in your packet, you should have the updated twenty twenty-one commission meeting schedule. Those were dates that we had already previously discussed at our last meeting. I don't believe there were any objections raised. Um, so if there still are no objections raised, I would recommend the commission to adopt this commission meeting schedule, and we will send it out appropriately to start getting this scheduled on all of your calendars. Um, so if no objections, this is the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule.
Okay, very good. You're, are you asking for a motion in that regard, or just don't want to know if someone has any difficulty?
Um, I think we have to adopt it. Let me see real quick. Uh, review, discuss, and possible action. So it's possible action. We don't have to, or they all say that, actually. Um, I would just uh, move to adopt it so that we have it on the uh, on the agenda, and we have it approved.
Okay, okay, fair enough. First of all, commissioners, are you agreeable to this schedule?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, as am I. Um, uh, the chair would be open to a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the two thousand twenty-one commission meeting schedule.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Much more to come this year. Uh, our next bid is called to the Uh, our next bid is called to the commission. Commissioners who would like to ask questions or introduce ideas are welcome to do so at this point. That includes the Executive Director. Uh, Mr. Meneses, Commissioners, anything you would like to chat about?
I'll real quick, just give you guys a quick update. Um, over the last uh, week or so, we have received uh, significant interest um, from um, network caring promoters that are interested in returning to Arizona for uh, live, live events. Um, I've spoken with um, uh, a promoter for, for boxing that is interested in having three um, headlining title fights um, for boxing within the next, they would like to do it within the next ninety days um, if the COVID data um, allows. So they are already looking at uh, a major uh, bout at the end of February and two in March if they can, one in the beginning of March and one towards the end of March. Um, these would be uh, significant headlining um, bouts um, that I think most fans here in Arizona would be very happy to, to have here. Um, and especially if we're able to have a, a, a crowd attended event. So the promoter that I've been speaking with and the other promoters I've been speaking with are aware of the same information we've relayed to uh, uh, Mr. Lopez and other promoters that were looking at the COVID data. Here's the website to look at AZDHS. They're aware and as soon as we're able to start hopefully moving in a, in a better direction, they want to start um, uh, scheduling and, and getting some things on the books. So it looks like there's definitely some interest um, for this year to start coming back strong and, and we, we look forward to that opportunity. Um, but you know, we got to get COVID under control and that takes all of us doing our part and wearing our masks and so forth. So um, that's where we're at now and, and we'll definitely keep you guys updated if those are able to start moving forward. But uh, it looks like it's gonna be a promising twenty twenty one if we can um, get this other under control.
Thank you, Mr. Meneses. If I may, what does uh, a, a, a crowd look like in this day and age? At one of these events?
So um, one of the promoters I spoke to, they recently had an event in another state. Um, and they did uh, about forty percent, I believe, uh, occupancy of the venue. Um, and they had about six thousand people in the um, in the venue space. Um, I had seen that, that fight um, uh, televised and had seen the crowd and everybody was kind of spaced out. So it actually looked um, uh, pretty reasonable to do. They were able to use the big space that they were in and really space everybody out, you know, groups of two or three, whatever your party was. Um, and then nobody was around you for a row or two or at the opposite end. Um, the venues they're looking at here, um, they're very open to um, one, an outdoor venue uh, possibly. But there's significant interest in both the Cardinal Stadium and the Chase Field because of the opening roofs as well as the side panels that open and will allow for more um, fresh air. Uh, as well as, as we all know, Arizona is beautiful, especially uh, around March. So having all that stuff open and, and, or doing an outdoor event in March um, would probably be uh, amazing. So they're definitely looking at other options and considering things. Um, most of these would probably be in the Phoenix area, but there is one uh, specific bout that they are considering the Tucson Market for. Um, and that would probably be at the Convention Center. Um, but that would also limit the, the attendance because of the size of the, the Convention Center. Um, and without being able to open more things up, uh, they would have more success with having uh, more fans uh, at the bigger venues. I, I think um, I think Cardinal Stadium is sixty-eight thousand. Um, and AZDHS recommends no more than fifty percent occupancy. So, and that's still a thirty thousand uh, seats if you were to follow that to the T. Um, obviously, we would not want to try to put that many people still in the venue. Um, but you, if you're really looking at what the data recommends or, or what AZDHS recommends, uh, we could still have a significant event um, with a significant crowd um, when the time is right.
Okay, thank you. Um, Cardinal Stadium is a vaccination site right now too, so you gotta, you have to sort of get that sorted as well. So a lot.
Yeah, so we actually talked about that this week and that one is gonna go ahead and probably be pulled off the books because that one probably won't be ready in time, but they are working to, to make some connections with Chase Fields um, to start moving that one next.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, I love the idea of being standing outdoors. That's always better than not, but uh, uh, it is what it is. Um, Commissioners, thoughts?
Uh, and I personally would be very supportive of uh, events being held outside. Uh, you know, we know from the scientific data that you're probably fifteen twenty times more likely to get COVID inside rather than outside. And so from a public health standpoint, it certainly would be uh, much more comfortable to put on an open air event than it would be indoors. But I also support the idea of uh, creating space and social distance between people in a larger venue. Uh, I think that also, um, if people are masking and we've got rows and seats between people, I think that's also a potentially uh, safer way to, to put on an event.
I agree. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Doctor. Um, yeah, I, I don't know, Chase, yes, go ahead.
If I might ask our physicians, uh, what do you think of this new strain and its uh, uh, more rapid or it's more contagious uh, properties as far as having uh, events and, and being concerned about it? You know, the, the English strain or the South African strain that seems to be a lot more contagious than what we're having now.
Yeah, so there certainly seems to be um, evidence that there are other strains of the virus that have higher uh, transmissibility than um, the strains that we've been uh, dealing with up to this point. And we are seeing those strains in various populations across the US. I think uh, the good news is that it does appear that the current vaccinations uh, are effective against those new strains, at least as far as we know so far. And it doesn't appear that the severity of illness is any different than what we're used to. I think um, as these strains um, start to propagate, uh, it will be interesting uh, to see if we do see higher rates of COVID spread or more super spreader events. I think if we do start to see that, I think uh, and it, and it is traced back to these newer strains. I think we will have to reconsider um, lots of different things as it relates to the public health approach. Um, but for now, I think um, we're treating it uh, really no differently uh, until we have a reason to make a change. And I don't know, Dr. Oda, if your experience has uh, been different.
Yeah, um, I, I agree with that. Um, I haven't really personally seen necessarily uh, patients with um, disease from these newer strains. Um, I can say that I've had actually, interestingly, a couple of patients that have had recurrent uh, COVID. And not that it has been anything life-threatening for them, uh, but that has happened. Um, but what is interesting is that um, if I'm not mistaken, some of the studies currently on the vaccine have shown that there is some degree of cross immunity. Not only with the vaccine that we, the couple of vaccines that we're currently using, but also um, for folks that have uh, natural immunity from exposure to the virus. So unfortunately, the only thing we can do right now is just kind of watch and wait, take precautions and see where this goes and then adjust as we need to. Um, I guess right now, only, only time will tell.
Indeed. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you both. Um, Mr. Meneses, these uh, what appear to be large promotional companies. I imagine you have walked them through what our protocols look like and what a scenario might look like. I'd just like to make sure they have an idea of where this is headed if we're talking about ninety days out.
Yeah, the good thing um, for us is that we were kind of ahead of, of the game when it came to developing a COVID protocol. We worked right away with um, with Dr. Oda and um, Dr. Muzi from the Association of Ringside Physicians. We were one of the first commissions um, uh, to actually uh, develop and put out our COVID protocol. And that has now been shared with other commissions. So many of these promoters um, have already been under a COVID protocol from another commission that's very similar, um, or very identical to ours, or they use ours kind of as a template. So it's very similar across where they're doing with testing and, and requiring masks and so forth. So it's nothing out of the uh, ordinary, anything that's gonna surprise any of them.
Okay, great, thank you. Please stay on top of us. If you need help, I'm happy to chime in. It's nice to be loved. Um, it would be nice to put on three or four big international events if it comes to that, uh, but again, we got to uh, cross our t's and dot our i's too and make no promises. You know, it, it's a moving target all along, but uh, but, but thank you for your efforts in that regard.
Sure.
Um, this is still the call to the commission. Commissioners, anything else you'd like to talk about?
Mr. Chairman, I'm.
They're being, okay. Hearing nothing, let's, let's hear from the public. F is the call to the public. Those members of the public wishing to address the commission must attend via video conference and use the raise hand function or message the meeting host directly to be recognized by the chair. We ask that you limit comments to five minutes. Mr. Meneses, anyone want to chat with us?
I believe Mr. Martinez or somebody from Rough Nation was waiting. Uh, Carlo was going to uh,
Yeah, we had uh, CJ from Rough MMA.
All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning. Um, very excited to be looking at getting back, very, very. Uh, my question is just quickly, um, after going through, I've almost memorized the uh, the COVID protocol. Um, as far, the only, only real question I had on there was uh, the equipment for temperatures, temperature checks that are required in the COVID protocol. Are, is the commission providing that equipment or is that expected of the promoter?
For just the temperature checks, just the standard temperature checks?
Thermometers and, and whatnot that are stated that um, prior to and each day will be used for.
I know you're good. Yeah, we're gonna make sure that people that are entering the venue, there'll be somebody there. Um, we've only unfortunately had one event so far under COVID protocol, so we haven't been able to iron out all the wrinkles. Um, at the last event we did, um, we did any day that we were planning on being at the venue or in a kind of a congregate setting for weigh-ins or, or for testing. Those were the days that we did um, uh, temperature checks. The promoter chose to do additional as they had other meetings, but any of the meetings that we had as a, as a group, um, we did temperature checks on everybody and documented those. So we'll take care of that, but it doesn't help, or it doesn't hurt, um, if you have your own thermometer to also do it um, at the venue. And it looks like he fell off the call.
Okay, next we have Jason Martinez with Rough MMA.
Uh, good morning again, everybody. Really quickly, um, I just want to add um, an additional piece of information for consideration. I respect and appreciate how we all, because I was part of those conversations in the beginning, how we came to um, the threshold of ten percent for ICU and in-bed, in-bed patient availability. And I totally respect the doctors' experiences and all that stuff. Um, but we are a boxing and MMA commission, so the focus here is getting fights going. And so my only, I'm not trying to propose an alternate reality, but I want to propose an additional reality is that the NIH has done studies on MMA events and hospitalizations. So I recommend that, that some people look into that because the percentage of hospitalizations um, for every one hundred combatants is, it floats around twenty-two to twenty-five percent. So for a fight with twelve, for an event with twelve fights, you're talking a max of potentially five, six people who are gonna go to a hospital. So that's real data and I think it should also be considered because we're so focused on the severity of COVID data. We're not looking at the reality of what happens at a fight, and I know Dr. Oda is familiar with that as well. But the average per hundred fights is twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty-five percent hospitalization. So I just want that to be considered as well as we're considering everything else in the future. Thanks.
If, if I can just say something to that real quick, we plan for worst-case scenario. So I understand that there are, there's data that shows that uh, MMA as a, as a sport um, has, has, has evolved and that there's, you know, injuries compared to boxing and, and so forth. Um, but we have to also plan on a worst-case scenario. Um, you look at potentially five people going to the hospital. If the entire Arizona medical system only has thirty-eight ICU beds available, we're taking five for an optional sport that we could have postponed so that people that have other medical ailments, car accidents, heart attacks, strokes, whatever, still have ICU beds available and can still be treated. So we will continue to operate under worst-case scenario, making sure that we are not putting a further strain on our medical system. And that's why we came up with that number of ten percent, um, because anything below that, I think the commission has determined to be a little unreasonable to be moving forward with an event. Um, because that is an overall projection of our entire hospital system. And as you can see, there's, there's other um, uh, other jurisdictions that are struggling for uh, medical supplies, medical availability, and sometimes even oxygen. So um, we know that most of our athletes that were to go to the hospital, if it was a severe injury, would require oxygen as well. They would require uh, advanced medical care. There's potential for brain injuries. There's a whole plethora of potential scenarios that we want to make sure that we are prepared for and we don't want to proceed with this. Um, well, it, it might not happen or the chances of it not happening, um, because that's usually when we, we get caught um, i- in a situation that we um, don't want to be in.
I appreciate that. I just wanted, you know, to inject the additional math into the equation.
Sure, now we, we appreciate that. Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I would just say that, that I do appreciate that and I think I'm not, I think at the commission, we're not just worried that injured fighters are gonna overwhelm our medical system, but in order to put on an event, even with a crowd, we do have to gather a significant number of people. And I think that that ICU bed um, marker is used nationally, not just to look at the hospital capacity, but as a marker of the prevalence in the community. And I think um, gathering people together, um, even if there's no crowd, there's still gonna be a significant number of people when the, when the community prevalence is so high that we have single-digit uh, ICU beds left, I think is, is um, something that we really need to question. And I would also say that um, even if there's three or four fighters that end up in the emergency room, that's not gonna overwhelm the hospital, but you do have to consider that you're now exposing those fighters and their attendance to uh, uh, an emergency room waiting area full of COVID patients. And uh, you know, we're trying to keep all of our patients out of the hospital if at all possible because the hospital represents a significant risk given how many beds uh, and how, how many ER bays are full of uh, really sick COVID patients. So there's a lot to consider. I, I do appreciate uh, what you're saying and I think um, we're, we're gonna try to be thoughtful about getting events back on as soon as possible.
Thanks, Doctor. I, I.
Thank you very much.
Wholeheartedly. The, the ER docs I talked to say they're redlined, that the uh, the less critical folks are waiting at times four hours to be seen and adding more people to that queue uh, is definitely a double-edged sword. I'd love to see us get fights going, but we've got to do it carefully and within our protocols too. But I appreciate the comments, same time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Meneses?
Carlo, anyone else?
Nope, nobody else.
All right.
Okay, well, that leads us towards G, the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at ten AM on Wednesday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-one, and is subject to change based on a quorum. Looking forward to that. Hopefully better numbers at that point. And H is the possibility of adjournments. Is there a motion by chance for one?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are officially adjourned. Thank you all. Thanks for all of your time and your efforts, doctors. Thank you so much. I pray we see better numbers in the months to come and uh, we live to tell about this, but uh, everybody stay safe. And we'll talk again on February tenth. Thanks again.
Time is ten fifty-one. Thank you.